Tuesday, April 12th, 2022. Laura, could you please take your call?
I don't believe we do that for study sessions.
All right, let's go right on to the study sessions. Public comments on study session related items. Do we have anybody from the public that would like to step forward?
I guess that would be me.
Okay.
I'm here representing Salt City Rock and Blues.
Okay, and your name is Bob?
Bob Ogilvy.
Okay.
And the reason I'm appearing here before council is to implore the council to include in the budget a funding for a feasibility study for the amphitheater that we hope to build down at First Street Beach at Douglas Park. I think in 2018, or it could be 2019, a committee was formed of local business people and committee members to investigate getting an amphitheater built at the beach. And towards that end, we had pledged monies to do so. In fact, we have some money set aside to help with the feasibility study. Obviously, if that money is not needed, we would use it to build the amphitheater. And that would be really is our focus for what we want to do with Salt City Rock and Blues moving forward. That really is our single-minded goal, if you will, is to get that amphitheater built. So my purpose here today is to encourage you to include a feasibility study in your budget. Mr. Gamble had indicated that there might be money from the economic stimulus funds from the federal government to accomplish that. So I'm hopeful that you will take that into consideration and move forward with the feasibility study. I would really hate to see the impetus that we have going now to wither and die on the vine. We had some momentum going. The pandemic interrupted that. And now we'd like to focus our efforts again to move forward with the construction of the amphitheater.
Okay. Thank you very much for coming forward and reminding them. Presentation of SwimSmart.
All right, well, thank you very much for your time.
And you must be Jacob.
I am Jacob Soder, yep. So I am the manager of SwimSmart. We are a startup company in Michigan, and we produce electronic lifesaving equipment for drowning emergencies. So unfortunately, it's behind you, but there is a presence.
Oh, no, they have it on their screens.
Oh, okay. So what exactly are we trying to solve here today? We're trying to solve drowning here in the Great Lakes. So unfortunately, Lake Michigan has some of the highest drowning rates of any of the Great Lakes, actually, some of the highest drowning rates in the country. About 100 people drown every year on average in the Great Lakes. Half of those are on Lake Michigan, and a substantial amount of them are on in Michigan. So I don't recall if Manaskey has experienced a drowning recently, but as you know, about every year, somebody, one of your neighbors experiences a drowning. And drowning is a very serious problem. It is, a lot of people think it is impossible to figure out, you know, whether or not something like this will occur. Well, there do exist tools that the Weather Service provides you to forecast these hazards. And these, so the stats we have here, we took all of the data since 2002 that was collected by a nonprofit of all drownings. And we used what the Weather Service forecasts with their calculations. And we found that 70 to 75% of all drownings in the Great Lakes as a whole happen in red flag conditions. Now, that doesn't necessarily mean that a beach has the flag system. So if you've talked to Josh, he manages the flag system here, goes out to the beach, and he changes a flag, red, yellow, and green flag. And some beaches do it daily, some beaches do it multiple, multiple times a day. It's based on your local weather service's forecast. So they give you guidance. But at the end of the day, it's up for you as city leaders to determine, you know, what is safe and what isn't. But the Weather Service is here to help. So we found 75% of all drownings here in the Great Lakes happen in red flag conditions. So the question becomes if we can appropriately provide swimmers with information during these red flag conditions, can we lower those numbers? And in a perfect world, we should be able to lower them by 75%. A big part of this is drowning is, the first line of defense is lifeguards, right? And I understand that for a lot of communities, lifeguards just isn't possible. That's understandable. So how can we provide people with tools to make better decisions and respond to emergencies without having lifeguards? So essentially, what we came up with was taking the flag system and making it electronic. So rather than sending the police out every day to change a flag, now it's connected directly to your Weather Service forecasts. We also have a application that you can have either the city, the police, the fire department log into, and they can override any of your lights. So if you have the lights on both halves of your beach, you can set the lights to whatever color you want, or you can set them to Weather Service. If it's set to Weather Service, it will follow the National Weather Services forecast for the whole season. So in Muskegon, we have a pilot partner in Muskegon at Pier Marquette. They ran a system last year. They did not have to touch it once from May until October. So the entire swim season, the lights all updated themselves. How the system is now, we have what we call a scoreboard. So it looks kind of like a scoreboard. We either use two wood posts and mount it, or we can mount it to the side of a wall. I believe what's proposed for Manaskey in particular is mounting it to your beach pavilions. The little box there, I should have set it upright. The gray box is essentially like a fire alarm control panel. So with a fire alarm, you have a box that you mount somewhere in a building, and then you can wire lights and buzzers around the building. So this system, it functions very similar to a fire alarm system. But instead of fire emergencies, we're dealing with drowning emergencies. So we call it the fire alarm equivalent for drowning. Now, what we're proposing here today is the installation of the first piece of our fire alarm system, which is the lights. So the lights is your flag system. That's what allows you, that's what allows you to give information to the public on what conditions are risky to swim in and not. And that's essentially what the beach traffic light does, is it takes those forecasts that the Weather Service gives to you and then displays that in a traffic light. So the forecasts that the Weather Service give, it's red, yellow, white. We decided to stick with red, yellow, green. A lot of beaches, all beaches I've seen, use red, yellow, green flags. We decided to stick with red, yellow, green because it has to be easy to educate the public, not just, you know, adults, but also children. You know, how can we make it effective and easy to communicate to children? The traffic light. So I'm just gonna skip over that. How the forecasts are right now is they forecast county by county. We're working with the Weather Service to break that up into what we call a point forecast. The point forecast is about every 1,000, 2,000 feet. So now you'll have multiple forecasts on your beach, and the light will be able to follow particular, you know, the beach may be, may have little alcoves, you may have a pier, you may have a rock wall. That can impact, impact the forecast from, from one end of the county to the other. This point forecast will give you a very accurate forecast for your particular county. And if it's not, that's where the app comes in. You can empower whoever you decide in the city to have permissions over the lights and override them when need be. So what we offer right now is the scoreboard. This is what we're proposing to install here on both, both sides. I forget the names of the beach, but both beaches on either side of the outlet. I believe what is set for it is that the panel, the control box, can wire in multiple lights, just like a fire alarm system. I believe two lights on each side, one towards the parking lot and one towards the beach, right? So you get people coming in, you get people coming to the bathroom. And how the scoreboards are is with our partner in Frankfurt, I'll pass out these materials at the end, they mounted, if you, if you did go to Frankfurt and see their system last year, they have it on a pole, and then there's a small sign. Well, what we learned from feedback last year is people weren't sure necessarily, they saw the light, but they weren't sure what it was for, right? Because you really have to be to the point and in their face when it comes to signage, where people just will not look at it. So that's why we blew the signage up, mounted the light to the sign, and now it's a scoreboard. So the scoreboards run about, they start at 5,000. So typically, including electrician costs and everything, a grant of about 15 to 20K can fund one to two systems. And again, one of those boxes can wire in multiple lights. So about 15 to 20K can have a good installation for both sides of your beach. Where we're going is, we've recently partnered, we're in a, in the process of doing a joint venture with Code Blue Corporation. So Code Blue, they manufacture blue light towers in Holland, Michigan. So they manufacture everything right here in southwest Michigan. They build blue light towers, which effectively are big metal tubes, and they have a blue light on it. You actually have one on, I believe, both beaches. Effectively, there's just a call box, you click the button on the call box, it calls 911, and the blue light flashes. Well, we took that concept of the, the emergency beacon, and we expanded it to the flag system. So now you have the red, yellow, green. In this case, there can be double red, so the DNR is proposing double red means beach closed. So the weather forecasts, red, yellow, and greens, but you as city leaders, we can now empower with closing the beach. In Florida, and what's being proposed at state parks here in the Great Lakes, is to ticket people up to $500 if they swim during a red flag day. That doesn't mean you can't be on the beach, but if the, the weather conditions are dangerous enough and you put up double red, now you have an enforcement mechanism to keep people safe. So we're working with Code Blue to build these new designs, and effectively, it's a metal tube, red, yellow, green light, and we can have a call box. So if there is an emergency, people can call 911. Well, what SwimSmart patented, what we sell is rather than a phone, we put a life ring cabinet. So the red cabinet here contains a life ring, not the one here, but it will contain a life ring. The cabinet is kind of like pulling the fire alarm, right? So instead of pulling the alarm when you're in a building, you open the cabinet to get the life ring. Now you've provided the person that's in the, in the act of emergency with flotation. That is the most important thing. If you don't have lifeguards, the first line of defense is flotation. If there's no flotation, typically what happens is someone tries to go rescue them, and then they both end up drowning. So providing, providing flotation is the best means. So since it's connected to the cell towers, just like the call boxes, it's doing the same thing. It's calling first responders. It's calling your police, it's calling your firefighters. Code Blue has been doing this for 30 years. They are a great partner to work with. They can set it up so they can call Coast Guard, whether or not they're in your county. They may be the county over. They can call sheriff, right, county sheriff, maybe a county over. It depends on where you're situated in the counties and who's responding to the emergency. But now we can coordinate all of these resources at once when a drowning emergency occurs. And that kind of comes into just the generic life ring cabinets. So we've taken this idea, and we've expanded it beyond just what would be on your coast, but it can also be in lakes and rivers, anywhere you know that is, there's drowning potential. Now you have the ability to, so anybody who's on the beach can make a rescue, and as soon as that cabinet's open, all of your first responders know when and where it was activated. So these towers here can be single or double sided. So we can take that tower, and we can put two life rings on it. Now, it may not seem like a huge upgrade, but to have now two people empowered to make a rescue, because throwing the life rings is a little more, bit more difficult than people realize, you know, learning how to throw them and how to reach the person that's swimming, but now you have double the resources. But the question comes down to education. So rolling out a new system like this, it requires you as city leaders to work maybe with the schools or with, you know, the media to effectively communicate how we're going to educate the public on this. Because unless people are educated on what to do, it's relatively ineffective. So we have partners in the Great Lakes Water Safety Consortium. That's actually where we learned about this. If you need any help with that, we have a bunch of people in that organization that are experts in water safety, and they do school tours and things like that. I'd be happy to connect you with them as well. But really, what it comes down to is the hardware. You have tools that empower your staff, and then education. So education comes into not just the dynamic signage, which is the signage that changes in real time, but you also need to carefully consider where you're going to put static signage, so it's just regular aluminum signage that says, hey, this is what red, yellow, green means, right? So when you're planning this out, you put the electronic signage near your building, and then you can put other signage around the beach. And, you know, we're happy to do that, to help you with that planning. I've been working with Josh on getting a strategy going, but that's, that's about all I have. I'm happy to answer any questions. We are a Michigan startup. We're going to be manufactured here in Michigan. Working with Code Blue will give us the capacity to not only deliver on this more complex hardware, but also help you maintain that in the long run. So how it is now is we sell the hardware one off. So we're selling it to you, you're just going to pay a lump sum. Where we're moving towards is essentially a lease, where you'll buy, you'll pay a down payment and then lease the equipment, and then built into that lease is all the maintenance. So you won't have to, if something breaks, we'll fix it for you. All the data costs and everything is all included in the lease. Now, I don't want to confuse you. How it is right now is 20K to get the systems, but as we roll out the new hardware like this here, which we expect next summer, we can talk more about that lease model and what that looks like. So all of the pricing is in here, and I can send you a more elaborate pricing information, but I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Is there signage that goes along with that cabinet thing? Do you know what it is?
With the life ring cabinet?
Yeah.
Yeah, there, there will be signage. So we expect to have the life ring cabinet, so the static life ring cabinet, and then the life ring cabinet attached to the tower. We're thinking May 23, so swim season of next year. But the life ring cabinet may or may not be two years from now. But the towers, we're pushing everything for next summer. What we have now is the scoreboards, but there will be signage associated with everything.
Okay. So you don't currently have the towers? That's just a future?
That's a, that's a next summer thing. So what we're proposing right now is the scoreboards. And the scoreboards and the towers sort of work together because the, the towers, you do have a unique case where you actually have blue light towers already on your beach. So most beaches don't have that setup with the electrical and the concrete board. So we can just drop it right in, and it's relatively easy. But how the towers will be with a lot of beaches, it's going to have like a, almost like a tripod sort of thing, and you'll be able to pick it up because when the water level moves, you know, the past couple of years, the water level's been high, now it's starting to recede, you'll be able to pick them up with construction equipment and move them around the beach. You could bring them in, winterize them, whatever you need to do.
I have a question.
Sure.
Does that open up? Can you?
Yeah.
Can you open it up and talk to us?
We're working with them to get a better lash, but it's just a rubber little pole. It opens up. And then this is the cabinet. So there's, there's little fingers that allow you to wrap the 100 feet of rope around. So the life rings are attached to 100 feet of rope, wrap it around, set it in there. And one of the biggest problems that people find with life rings when they have them out there is that, you know, how do you know it's there? Right? So if you put life rings out on your beach, especially if you have a bunch of them, how do you know if it's there or not? And then what happens if you say, hey, we have life rings on our beach, the life ring's missing, and then a drowning happens? So this is a big problem Illinois is finding right now. The state of Illinois just passed a legislation through the state to mandate life rings on the whole state, and they're going to have to buy thousands of life rings. So the question is, who's going to maintain them? Who's going to make sure they're there every day? It's the same problem with the flags, right? Who's going to change them every day? Is it going to be the police? Is it going to be the fire department? So we're just trying to take essentially this technology to make it easy on your staff. Oh, I think I just broke it. Make it easy on your staff to monitor them in the long run. So this is, it is relatively expensive to save flags, right? To a flag pole and cloth flags, but this is, we consider a permanent, a long-term solution to these problems.
I don't know if Josh has talked to you, but, but one of our challenges is a river.
Yeah.
A river walk. And we have a difficult time keeping life rings. People like to take them as souvenirs.
Yep.
Something like this with a camera or and/or a callback mechanism would certainly help us. We don't necessarily need a lot more bells and whistles than that. So my thought is, as you consider this, have something that literally what you're trying to do is be able to keep a life ring and have it mounted in such a way that if somebody takes the life ring, it alerts the police or fire, and it, it photographs whoever is taking it. So we have a record of what's going on. And then that way, we can, again, continue to deploy our life rings down our river.
Yep.
We've had a couple of fatalities and near misses because not being able to get a life ring out to people.
Yeah, people do take them a lot, and then the question is, if it's missing and someone drowns, what happens, right? You open yourself up to liability. So the state of Illinois is reckoning with that right now, where they're going to have thousands of these things. The Parks Department decided to do nothing, and now they have this huge, open-ended question of what happens if someone drowns. And that's, that's what we're working with them to do is, Code Blue, they, the blue light towers already have like a faceplate inside of it, so it's regular a call box. There's a faceplate that has a camera in there. So it's the same, effectively the same thing, right? You push it, it takes a snapshot, and then it embeds that when it sends it to the police, right? It sends it in that message. So the, well, not just the police, anybody that subscribes to it, the Coast Guard, EMS, fire, they'll have that context. They'll have the picture, they'll have the location, they'll have, we can even embed the, the weather data in there for the case of maybe the beach rescues, you know, what's the water temp? Because this is really important information for Coast Guard, because depending on the water temp, that's how long they search.
Where would you put this on our First Street?
Yeah, so the, the light here, the control box is, how it works right now is the control box is connected to cellular. We can do Wi-Fi and Ethernet, so if you want to hook it up to an existing system, but we always have cellular as a fallback. So the cellular is really good. And one of those boxes would be in each of the buildings on two sides of your beach. Then we would mount a light on, Josh and I went to the left side beach. I did tour the right side. So essentially, you would mount it to one of the major walls coming in from the parking lot, one of the lights, and then the other sign would be mounted on the other side that's facing the beach. And then the control box would be mounted in like a utility closet or something. So, you know, we're, we're open to, you, you have about 75 to 100 feet from the control box, so you can really put it anywhere you want in the building. But that's the goal, is to utilize the building. Now, we do offer solar, so in the case of the, the scoreboards, we can do solar. So if you wanted it, let's say there's a location where you know a majority of the people walk in, but they won't be near the building, that's kind of where the, the scoreboards come into play, is you mount that near an entrance. We can double side them, so it'll be back-to-back traffic lights. But yeah, for, as, as it stands now, we're thinking two control boxes, one in each building, and then two lights for each building for a total of four lights, one facing the parking lot, one facing the beach.
But if the people are way down that end of the beach, I mean, that's why I wanted to know where this was going to be put. Are they going to have to run from, you know, somebody from way on there to run back up to your board?
Yeah, and that's kind of where the, that's where these are going to come in. So the, the main intention of the, the scoreboards is when they're coming in and leaving on the building, on the premise. The, the, the towers is what is meant for specifically on the beach. So in the case of bigger beaches, this would be, you'd pick it up, because it'd be movable, you'd be able to pick it up and put it where you want. So if you had two of them, you could move one to one end, one to the other, and they're 360 degrees, so you can see them from all directions.
So let me ask a clarifying question. We're talking a little bit about this. I, I think the towers seem to be the better thing, but that's not till next year. So are we talking about this for next year, nothing this year?
Scoreboards for this year, right?
I think we're hoping to put up the scoreboards this year.
This year? Okay. And then what, then, so next year, we're just going to have scoreboards, and we're not going to get the towers?
My understanding, there's some sort of, with the pilot, you can also upgrade. Is there options for that? Can you talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, so the, as pilot partners, so we are a startup, right? This is actually our second year. We didn't have customers last year. But we, we encourage you to buy the current hardware to, so that you can learn about the system and learn what you like and don't like. And the scoreboards also complement the towers, because the scoreboards are meant for, you know, high-traffic areas coming in or buildings, where you can really, really utilize the fact that it already has power out there, while the, the towers are meant for on the beach. Now, you can mount the tower, since you have a location, that would work too, but they, they complement one another. They're not a replacement for one another. So like, when people are coming in, they would have to be on the beach to actually know what the light color is. When alternatively, the scoreboards are meant for like, before people even get to the beach, they know. And what's being proposed this summer is the scoreboards.
Because some people don't go right to the building, they just go right to their spot on the beach and never really go to the building. So they wouldn't really be able to know unless they went to the building, right?
Yeah.
That what I'm understanding, they're going to put it mounted on the building?
Yep. And that, that's where the, the towers would come into play, is the towers are for the beach, and then the scoreboards are for the entrances.
This is basically, I understand, replacing the flag. So wherever that flag is now, this would be the replacement for it?
But that's not the same place, because the flag used to be out by the water.
Yeah, it's also, so it, it does replace the flag. It also allows you to put flags in places you normally wouldn't. Because that's, that's one of the, the value that the electronic system has, is now you can put flags where, because at the end of the day, somebody has to go and change the flag, so you really want to put it at the center of the beach or whatever. Having the electronic system where it changes by itself, that's what allows you to put it in locations where you wouldn't normally put a flag, if that makes sense.
So the towers are not in place of this. So when you sell this to somebody, you sell them that, and then you sell the towers as an addition?
Yeah. Yep, because the, these are mainly meant for the entrances, and then the towers are meant for on the beach.
So you never sell just the towers? You'd never just do that?
Well, we don't have the towers yet. There are cases where people just want the towers, but it, it sort of depends on the beach, because with beaches that have power and have a building, you can utilize the scoreboards more effectively than if you don't. Because you don't need the solar power and everything. The towers, they live on the beach, so they would practically almost all be solar. But in, in specifically your case, you do have already the towers on the beach, that's the only beach that we've approached so far that has that. So it's kind of a special case where you can mount the, the tower directly to power, but typically, the towers need to be solar.
So if we're part of your pilot, then next year, when the towers come up, you're going to give us a special on the towers? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah. So as, as pilot partners, you know, we're going to take care of you, and if you have old equipment, we'll rebate you for the equipment if you decide to get rid of it. So if you don't like the, the equipment you have now, we'll just essentially take that price off of the new equipment, and then we can resell the old equipment. If you want to expand, we'll, we will give you a discount. And a lot of it will move to the leasing model. So the leasing model will be a little bit different, where you won't be making it, you'll be making a small down payment plus just building it into the budget essentially.
So what happens now, since we don't have the leasing situation, if something goes wrong with this, do you still come and warranty?
Yep, your hardware warranty. So if anything goes wrong, and in, included in the price of this is also a service fee. So it, it's kind of already the leasing model, it's just the upfront price is to pay for the hardware. But there is a service fee, which is 300 a year, and that is what includes essentially customer service. We remotely monitor all the devices, so we actually send you monthly reports that show when it was connected, what the colors were, other ancillary information about the devices. So pretty much at all times, we can tell when the device is and isn't connected, can update the device, fix things that are wrong with it. So the, the service fee is actually already part of it, and we already monitor the devices and fix things as problems.
What would we anticipate we have to budget every year then? If it's 20 grand this year, what's next year, and the year after that, and the year after that?
Um, it would be a couple thousand, I think, for 20 grand. I couldn't give you the number off the top of my head. It would be a couple thousand, I think, for twenty grand. I couldn't give you the number off the top of my head, but they essentially have a seven, ten-year life, and you could expect to pay, like, you know, the price divided by seven or ten. So for twenty grand, you'd be paying a couple grand a year, and that also includes the service fee.
But that's twenty grand gets us the scoreboards.
Yeah.
Next year, we add, next year, we add, what's that cost? I mean, so is it twenty grand this year, then twenty grand next year, and twenty grand the next year?
No, no. So the twenty, because it is confusing. So right now, we're on just selling you the hardware. In the future, it's a leasing model, and the towers run typically seven, eight grand. As you add more features, they come up to ten grand or so. So imagine taking eight grand for one tower, and then dividing that by seven over the life of the tower. So essentially, like a thousand dollars a year you'd be paying. And then we're planning on doing three or five of your leases. So as you upgrade things, you wouldn't need to pay all of it out of pocket. We would just adjust the lease payments. So like, if you had the tower and you're like, well, we want to add a double-sided life ring cabinet, as we, you know, get that, let's say it happens in 2024, you can then upgrade your system without a big down payment. We just adjust the lease payments. So then all of the warranties and everything's also included in the lease payment. So even the cell hardware we're selling now, there is a warranty if things go wrong. You know, part of the service fee, you can call me, I'm going to be monitoring the devices anyways. And as problems arise, we usually fix them before you are aware they're there. But at this point, we fixed most of, we fixed all of the known issues last summer with our pilot partners. So the pilot, it is kind of a pilot in the sense that, you know, we still are, you know, we're partnering with communities to really get this thing going. But in terms of the technology, a lot of the problems that were with the technology in particular were fixed last year.
So what kind of problems have you had with your technology, and how quickly will, can a service call be?
Yeah, so that's a, that's a good question. So the problems we had last year were mainly connectivity. So it kind of depends on the beach. For beaches that are more remote, the connectivity is kind of an issue. In your case, it's not, because you're really close to cell towers and such. A lot of that came down to updating the software on the device, and we can do that remotely. So all of the problems that we experienced over the course of last year, we were able to fix from our office.
All of them? So you didn't have to actually physically go out and make a service?
Yes. Yep, and I'm happy to connect you with Josh Mills in Frankfurt, or Leo Evans in Muskegon. And actually, that's a good segue. I can give you this information now. So this is Leo, and can you pass this around?
Sure.
And this is Chris.
Can I ask you a question about the national weather forecast that you would be using as a, if we, if we did it without anybody intervening? And you're talking about it being every so many thousand feet or whatever, and there'd be a new dot point. Now, is that happening right now, or is that just something that?
So that's-
Talking about that's something you're working on.
That's something the Weather Service is working on. So how it is now is this county, by county forecast.
Okay.
They typically update two to three times a day, and it's your local weather office. So I would have to look into, you know, based on your county, where that weather office is. But typically, it's using already existing buoys and things that are off your coast. So, yeah, they typically update two to three times a day. For most beaches, it's, it's pretty good. There are some cases where it's not as effective, especially the UP, just because there's not infrastructure up there. But downstate, that's less of a problem.
So sometimes when I'm sitting on Fifth Avenue Beach, I'll all of a sudden get connected with Wisconsin on the other side.
Yeah.
So, I mean, what's to prevent-
Yeah.
A cell situation from getting the right forecast?
That is a good question. So our, and I don't want to use buzzwords, but this is 5G, so this is like the new generation, right? The fancy new generation. And we use different radios. So on your phone, you have little tiny antennas, and, you know, it all has to fit in that nice little box. We don't have that problem. We can use big as relative, right? Big antennas that we can mount to the top of the building and point it in a particular direction. So essentially, when it's pointing in that direction, it gets all of that cell signal really strong, and then everything around it is sort of in the background. In the case of your beach, we already surveyed it last year. You have a good cell signal across multiple frequencies, across multiple channels, I guess. So if one of them goes down, you have backups, essentially. Now, we don't really have that problem of things falling over and connecting to Wisconsin, but if that is a case, we do have fixes for that. So if you do experience that at all, and we will know that, because we'll see that it's disconnecting and reconnecting in our reports, we have a fix for that, which is essentially just a different antenna.
And I think the point of this was, and thank you, Jacob, for the overview, so providing better service, most up-to-date information to beachgoers. I think right now with the flag system, we saw this as an opportunity to upgrade as a pilot system. I'd like to invite Chief Glass to come up and talk about how we got to this point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't want to take too much time, but, so unfortunately, last May, we had a situation where there was a near drowning of multiple children. And we were, thankfully, a young pregnant woman pulled them to life. And when you have situations like that, it forces you to look at what services you provide, and can you improve upon them? You can't move forward blindly. You have to self-analyze. And in the past, we've had a situation or issues with, you know, right now, our police officers are expected to change the flags as the conditions change. But we can't always do that based on call volume and availability. And in the past, we've had issues where it goes from green to red, and we can't get out there, and we get beat up pretty bad with negative feedback from the public. So with the near drowning, we analyze and say, how can we provide better services moving forward? And for me, as a police chief, it was a two-pronged approach. Education in the schools for beach safety, and then can we upgrade our beach equipment to match our, I call it, state-of-the-art beach houses? We have, our beach houses are beautiful, they're great. So can we, can we provide equipment to match that? How do you fund it? How do you sustain it? From a risk management standpoint, what does it look like? So with the near drowning, I got ahold of the Water Safety, Great Lakes Water Safety Consortium. I'm working with them to develop a curriculum for kids in schools. I asked about beach safety equipment. What's the cutting edge out there? What are our surrounding communities using? They put me in touch with SwimSmart, which is, my understanding is the only company who has the direct connection with the NOAA, so we can get real-time beach conditions. So that's what kind of drove this whole thing. And we're addressing it from two different angles. Public education, especially for our young people in schools, and then what can we do for our equipment? Is there some movement we can, is there upgrades, or how we sustain it, how we fund it? What does it look like from a risk management standpoint? So that's kind of how we got here today.
It's going to come under your budget, Jeff?
We're looking to fund this with grant funds.
This is part of the IRA funding proposed.
Yeah.
The Revenue Sharing Board can't go.
We were looking at last cycle, but it wouldn't time up as far as when we get approved for that. We'd have to wait till the next beach cycle to put it out there. We want to put it out there as soon as possible, basically.
Well, a better system is long overdue. There's been a few times that I've been down at the beach, and I know the flag's either missing or it hasn't been changed, and I've made calls to try to get it fixed, and, you know. I know that the police are out on call. That's going to take a priority, so it's an antiquated system at best. Need to look at this closely.
I think with any change, obviously, there has to be public education about where to look for the light and make sure it's visible. But we're going to have to let people know this is where it is if we go down this route. So that's going to be part of the implementation, is letting people know about where to look for the, this is the replacement of the flag. This is where to look when you're on the beach.
And I think, honestly, I think that'll garner a lot more attention than just a flag, to me. Just that sign is going to draw my eye to it. Even if it's not lit, I'm going to say, oh. But I see warning or watch out is giving me a direction to be able to look and read the rest and see what's going on. So I think it makes perfect sense.
I, I think what you're doing with the school is great. I know when I was in the fourth grade, we had like a class called ground proofing, where they made us, it was required in school. Like, you didn't have a choice, you had to take it. And, I mean, they threw us in a canoe, threw us upside down, and like, taught us CPR and stuff like that. And it actually, like, my dad, when I was ten, jumped off a dock and broke his neck, and I saved him. So he's a quadriplegic now, but I wouldn't know how to do CPR and stuff like that if I didn't take that class. So the fact that we don't teach that in our schools and we live on Lake Michigan is kind of disturbing, like.
That was my thought process as well. We teach, we teach dating safety, dating violence safety, we teach all these different things, but we live between two bodies of water. So this week, actually, I'm getting the final draft from the Water Safety Consortium. Our officers reached out to the school to schedule time to teach this in the schools. If council does approve this, and this project does become a reality, we would add this to our education piece, saying this is a stoplight, is what red means, green means. So it's an easy transition that way.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea, and I don't think it's that expensive. I mean, we spend money on ridiculous things like dumpster enclosures. So, I mean, to spend money on this, that is needed. It's a good idea.
Any other questions for me? Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Well, I just want to thank you for your time. So at the end of the day, you know, we are a new business, and we need communities that are willing to give us a chance. So if this is something you believe in, if this is something that has promise for your beach, even if it's not the beach, like Mick said, you know, maybe on the side of your river or River Walk, we need partners that are willing to give us a chance to get to the next level. So the reality is, you know, we're a business, and to get to the next step, we need customers. And so to work with you, not only do we gain credibility with the eyes of Code Blue and other beaches, but we also get feedback from you. And that's what changed the product to what it is today. Working with Frankfurt and Muskegon, that's how we fix things, that's how we made it better. So, you know, we, we're active with our customers, you know, we visit you a lot, if you let us. And if anything goes wrong, you can call me, and we will fix it. So I just appreciate your time, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is discussion on the 2022-2023 Budget and Capital Improvement Plan. Finance Director Ed Bradford and City Manager William Gamble. How do you guys want to start this?
Council, I'd just like to address a question that was asked by a couple different council members regarding, why do we have to have tax increase, refuse increase, and water and sewer increase all in the same year? And it's a complicated answer, but I'll try to still it down a little bit. So the taxable value increase is nothing that city council has any control over. That's a process of the statutory guidelines in terms of the taxable value. It rises at the rate of inflation or five percent, whichever's lost. So in this case, the state of Michigan published inflation rate was three point three percent. Our taxable value actually grew more than that, because we had a lot of sales and uncappings, but that then resulted in a heavily rollback. So overall, it maintains that percentage. So that's the answer on the tax side. That's nothing that we control. On the refuse side, we have a fixed contract with Republic Services that escalates every year, as do our other costs in that fund, and we have to be able to cover those. We intentionally drew down the fund balance of the refuse fund over a five-to-six-year period, starting about ten years ago, because it had gotten too big, and during that time period, we didn't raise rates. We just relied on any millage increase or a tax, taxable value increases. We've gotten to the point now where we can't do that anymore, because we don't have enough fund balance to be able to maintain that. So we have to raise the rates kind of in conjunction with what Republic Services is charging. And on the water and sewer side, we have a rate study, which was done about six years ago, that put us on a really solid path to be able to not only operate and maintain the system, but also to fund capital projects for depreciating assets that need to be replaced, and also to match up infrastructure projects when we do streets. So we've had that three-and-a-half percent rate increase every year, and before that, we always had an inflationary rate increase. So it's something that the public is used to. That's necessary in a rising environment for cost to be able to maintain and operate your system. So that's why we've suggested just the three point five percent. We haven't gone more than that. We will be revisiting that rate study this fall in time for the next budget cycle, so they'll take a fresh look at that. And perhaps that might change moving forward, but that's why we recommended what we did.
I have a couple of questions on that, on the water and sewer. This is my thought process. I know you people, I know the staff, I shouldn't say you people. The staff has done a really good job, you know, working out the numbers. But it also, I think about the fact that we, between the marijuana money of two hundred eighty-two thousand and the ARPA funds, we're close to nine hundred thousand dollars. And this is probably the best year I can think of that you've actually had excess funds that you've been able to do something with. So I recognize that, and I think you probably have put some thought into this. But my problem as a city council member is that I don't see anything that's, how shall I say this? That's compassionate toward the citizens. The citizens have gone through some really tough times this year. The newspaper did an article about Alice, and forty-nine percent of the county is in poverty or at a poverty level. And I can't believe that it's any different here in the city. And to, I think, what I would like to see, what would make me want to pass this budget, would be that we freeze the water and sewer rates this year, because we're going to have a rate study next year. I want to give something back. They're overburdened already. They've got increases in the school millage, they've got increases all over the place. Everything is hitting them all at once. So that is, that is one of my concerns with this budget. And it's not a reflection of the work that you've done. It's just that I feel obligated, as an elected official, to actually help the citizens of, they've been through a very tough time. That being said, I'm also very concerned about, if I mispronounce this, you'll have to correct me, but I call it PPOS, the conditions that we found over in the city dump that's in filer. I've talked to Mr. Gamble about it. We've talked about the test wells that need to be drilled there. We've talked about a cost of about thirty thousand dollars a well. We talked about three of them. Again, city council members, I want you to recognize that we have an oil and gas fund, and we don't tap into it frivolously. But this is a, this is a serious condition. We need to be in concern, we need to be concerned about our environment. And I really do not think taxing the citizens to support this is the right way to go, when we could take a hundred thousand dollars out of the oil and gas fund, which is less than one percent of the value of that entire fund, and do the right thing and use cash to do it. So those are my two issues that I have. They're not a reflection on the work that you've done on the budgets, but I really feel that morally, we need to give back to the citizens and not overburden them this year, after what they've been through.
I would have to agree. I actually was thinking the same thing. I can't feel comfortable to do the millage and raise the rates for water, refuge. And then I actually wrote down, too, with oil and gas fund, we are sitting really good on that, and we haven't taken from that for, I think, five years now. We can't ask for all this increase for our citizens.
Mayor, I also voiced my concerns about the millage increase, but I felt that we received like nine hundred thousand in what I would consider windfall money this year. We got the six hundred and some thousand from the COVID money, and we got the two hundred eighty-three thousand from the marijuana, or fifty-some thousand marijuana money. And we only budgeted eighty thousand for the marijuana money in our budget anticipated revenue. There's plenty of room in this budget to take that hundred thousand out. If we find down the road that that, that project is going to be a huge cost, we can talk about a millage increase then. But in this budget, I can't, I can't sell a millage increase in this budget to my voters.
I can't even sell it to myself, you know. I'm going to say, you know, world of hate, not world of hate, world of pain, I should say. World of pain, because fixed income, when you're retired, you're kind of watching your money, and there's so many people like that in the city.
Play us at this table, we'll fill the same way.
There we go.
Mayor, if I might, if there was a choice between using a hundred thousand dollars of marijuana money and a hundred thousand dollars of oil and gas money, my recommendation would be to use marijuana money for, and to offset the proposed millage rate.
I think happening oil and gas is a bad start. Once you take that first hundred, man, the next two hundred easy, the next five hundred easy, and I just, I personally think we should take away from that.
The oil and gas board would support that. They've gone on record as not taking excess distributions, and we do have that flexibility. And certainly, that's a very appropriate use of that marijuana money, because it was a huge windfall. I do want to caution council a little bit. We don't know what marijuana money is going to be next year, and here's why. There's a lot of factors at play. One is, that's based on a ten percent excise tax across all the retail marijuana sales. There's an article in Bridge- Bridge Magazine recently that says the price of retail marijuana is plummeting, uh, because there's an oversupply. Now, will that settle out? Who knows? But that's what I have read. We don't know how many retail licensees we'll have in the city of Manistee in another year. There's five of them now. Are they all going to survive? That would have a direct impact. Um, you lose one, you lose 20% of your marijuana revenue. And then we also don't have any idea as to how many other communities are going to see that, oh, their people are making a lot of money, we're now going to allow marijuana retailers. And then you divide that pie by a bigger thing. So we have no idea, and we don't really have a way to predict very effectively what that's going to be. So there will be revenue from marijuana in the future. That's not what I'm trying to say, but we just don't know the amount. So this large 280, I think, is a real windfall and should be treated as such. I would hate to see that used for ongoing operations, because it's just not reliable income. But certainly, in this first investigatory year for PFAS, where we really don't know what the costs are going to be, it would seem to be appropriate for that, in my view.
And we don't know how much the cleanup's going to cost.
Correct.
Right. We don't know what Eagle's going to mandate.
And I don't know what kind of imaginary tactics we're going to be.
I mean, we could, if this is obviously a council policy decision, but you could take whatever amount of that marijuana money you wanted and internally restrict it, and then, and then use that, you know, solely for PFAS, if that was a, a choice of council or a portion of it. And that's, that's a way that you can, um, have that benefit over a number of years.
Is there any grants available to fix this problem?
Not right now. Um, there, there may be in the future. There was a lot of money that's sloshing through the state's coffers from the feds, and I think there, in the latest appropriation, there was some PFAS money, but we're not sure what that's going to look like, and it wasn't a lot, as far as I recall.
Right. And they allocated 15 million to Muskegon, but that was one site. Ours is still, we, you know, we're going through the process with Eagle, what they're going to require. Um, so the mitigation and kind of the investigatory work, we kind of have an idea, but we're not going to know what, what the extent of the contamination is till we really do more investigation. But I do want to also say that this budget process, we started for, you know, it's been going on for a couple of months. So the windfall of the marijuana money did kind of change, and I remember calling in and saying, well, can we adjust? And I think that, that we knew this conversation was coming, and we're hoping to figure out what, what council would like to do with that, additional, those additional funds. There's been plenty of ideas, and there's plenty of needs as well. So, I mean, we have different street projects, Sixth Street, um, with the new school, Slurry Seal, the First Street River Walk was brought up, um, and obviously, the need to kind of provide some relief to residents as well.
I do like the idea. Like, that's a good one, to use the marijuana money, as so long as we can use that for cleaning up the environment. That's a, that's our responsibility.
Even if we can freeze the increase for a while.
Using the green for the greens.
There you go. That is going to be the next headline.
Got your headline.
What exactly is wrong with the Sixth Street? I don't think.
Um, so the new school's going in, that's a pretty wide street, where they're going to have new curb cuts.
Oh, okay.
It's kind of a strange road. I don't know if, um, Jeff, if you'd like to talk a little bit about that?
What road are you referring to? I didn't hear.
Um, Sixth Street over by where the new school's going on Maple.
So we, uh, reached out to the school early on, after the mon, and said, you know, we've got issues on 12th Street with pedestrians, and some of that was a result of the school actually changing where the students were housed. And what we found after the study is, a lot of middle schoolers that are in the 12th Street facility, the high school, leave and go back to Kennedy School, after school for extracurricular activities, and that causes some crossing issues on 12th Street with, with traffic. We've got a project now that's going to, um, help with that. But we said, since you're going to be redoing Kennedy School, this would be the time in your planning stages for us to give you input on traffic patterns, pedestrian flows, and help guide you so that your site plan doesn't create any more conflict in the future, and we actually, um, can alleviate some of that. So, uh, we've actually had some very good meetings with the school. They've been very cooperative. Um, we've altered the site plan and their driveway approaches and so forth, um, to, I think, a very positive position, and should reduce some of those restrictions in the future. One of the major changes that the school is going to do is essentially, all of their traffic's going to enter off of Robinson on the west side, and then there will be one large exit onto Sixth Street near the intersection of Oak. Oak would be kind of opposed to it. Um, all of their foot traffic will be coming out of the west side of the school, where today, it comes out on the Sixth Street side. So they're going to eliminate a lot of the sidewalks that are there. Um, as the city manager said, that pavement section's like 60 some feet wide. Not all of that is in the city right away. A lot of that is in the school, on the school property. Um, what they're proposing is just to have or retain the angled parking on the north side, but then they don't anticipate any parking on the south side whatsoever. So we think there's an opportunity for the city to upgrade this section of the street, to put it on a diet, if you will, and bring it down to just the major street widths, so we can reduce the width of that pavement, um, almost by probably 40%, maybe a little bit more than that. Um, and to do that section between Maple and Robinson is about 200,000 to do the milling and the filling. Um, and then the improvements that the school would make would butt up nice against that.
When would that be done?
The plan would be for, uh, 2023 to fit into the school's schedule. The school's actually, we just met with them last week on this, but the school is actually going to move everybody out of that building while the construction takes place. So, um, we were concerned that it would, that it would end up being this year, but they're not going to be occupying it until the fall of '23. So it would be next year.
There are no sidewalks on Robinson Street, correct?
Uh, there are no sidewalks along that stretch. They're proposing sidewalks, yes.
All the way to the hole?
Nope, not all the way, but in front of the school, um, um, in front of the school frontage, um, there was some discussion, um, because most of the sidewalk that, or the sidewalk they've laid out is on the east side. And as they are trying to get up to Eighth Street, the tennis courts and the severe drop-off there prevent the sidewalks from being put in there. So, uh, that's something that in the future, we would look at when those tennis courts get removed, backfilling that with soil so that the sidewalks could continue.
Can you cut the road down from by the boost down to 12th Street?
That is not in any plans right now.
Yeah, these kids walking, I mean, they walk. Clean the road, go on 12th Street.
You said about traffic coming in off of Robinson.
Right, Robinson between Eighth and Sixth Street.
Oh, okay.
That's where their buses will enter. That's when visitors to the school, their staffing will enter.
That was pretty well laid out in that other presentation we had for the school. We had a nice diagram showing.
Yeah, and it's changed a little bit based on our input, so it's been a good relationship.
Got to hear that. Jeff, while you're, um, she's sitting back down. I, I just have a question about, um, I'm, I'm looking through this whole thing, and I don't see it anywhere. Tell me that I'm wrong. Um, is there a plan for, um, maintenance and repair of the River Walk between where you guys did the beautiful job, and when it hits, when it gets to, when it gets to downtown? So the space between First Street and when it gets to downtown. I don't see anything. I don't know what you call that section of it, but.
So the, the maintenance of that falls within the parks operating budget on an annual basis. It's not specifically line item out. Um, and we don't have any money proposed for any capital improvements on that section. This, this, um, the current plan is the complete reconstruction of the River Walk on the north side. Then we've got, uh, very far down the road with the EDA grant from Spruce Street to the east end, but that section hasn't been, um, is furthest down that priority list.
So what maintenance do you do on that currently?
Um, we trim back the limbs. We, you know, in the spring, we'll rake out the leaves, blow it off. Um, residents are on that 24 hours a day, so if there's any boards missing or anything like that, they typically call in, um, and we go down and do those spot repairs.
What about like the moss growing in spots where it gets really slippery and?
So, uh, because of that's treated, treated wood, and it contains, um, um, the arsenic. We cannot power wash those. Um, what we did do between Tamrec and Cedar Street was, um, several years ago, we spent, I want to say $12,000 to thin the trees out in there, um, to try to get more sunlight to it. Um, but there, there's, there's not a whole lot we can do. However, we did put in, one of my line items for a, a broom, a power broom. Uh, but it's, it's tough, because you can't do too much with it. And if you get into the wood grain, then you're going to release that arsenic. But we, we did put in to buy a piece of equipment, an attachment to a power washer that has less, less impact, and, and that could be a solution for it.
All right. I just, I just think it's sad that beautiful downtown's going to be beautiful, and this part you just did is beautiful. But then if you walk between those two spots, it's slippery, it's mossy, it's not very nice. And I would just love to see some attention spent there as well.
Yeah, we can add that to the capital improvement plan for future funding. But like anything else, we're trying to take things in.
In sections.
In bites that we can handle.
For sure. Just want to put that voice out there.
Just have a little writing question. A citizen asked me to put Harper Drive on the repave list. It's not anywhere on anybody's agenda, is it, for the next several years?
It's not in the five-year transportation improvement plan.
Five years out?
It is not in the five.
That's why, that's why, no, I didn't see that in any, any plan. Okay, that's what I thought. Thank you.
It's been brought to my attention, too.
Yeah, I just, I kind of passed it off, said it wasn't going to happen, so. Thank you.
All right. Thanks.
And Mayor, I just wanted to point out, I know Mr. Oldaby left, but we did on page 14, the proposed ARPA funds, we did have the amphitheater feasibility study on there for 20,000. And there may be some additional DNR funds coming out, too. So, um, I was talking with Councilman Shemansky about it, and maybe we get some cost estimates updated, and maybe we can shoot to have the thing, you know, making fun of the whole thing, maybe? That would be great, so.
What does the feasibility study include for something like that?
So my understanding about this was kind of making sure it would, um, you know, it would cash flow, or you would basically have enough, um, revenue to sustain a bond payment. Um, that was my understanding. And Mr. Shemansky?
You know, how, how big should it be? Should it be, you know, again, I don't know if you've read in the news, but the Grand Rapids is spending $116 million on their amphitheater, um, 12,000 seats on the, on Grand River.
Two for every resident here.
Right. Well, but, but part of the feasibility study is right sizing. It, it, should it be, you know, 300 people, or should it be 3,000? So that's a part of it. And then, and again, and then making sure that there is logic, that it isn't just a pipe dream, uh, or one person's vision, but that it is a vision that is, is accepted by the community at large.
Uh, Mr. Gamble, did you say you were going to have a meeting with, um, the city manager and the mayor of Luddington?
I did meet with the city manager of Luddington, yes.
It might be good to give one of them a call, because I do attend the.
Rhythm and Juts.
I do go down there for their tribute bands in the summer.
Yes.
And they fill that whole space. And they must have 4,000 people.
Yeah.
In that space with an amphitheater. And, and that would give us a good gauge. Westshore Bank has always sponsored them, give us an idea of, um, what kind of attendance they have. And they do have 8,000 people in, in Luddington, which is 2,000 more than we do. But I do think we draw from the county, too.
Okay.
So, just to.
Does Luddington provide money for their, their areas? Yeah, they built, that's a city.
Yeah. The bands are provided by Westshore Bank, that the entertainment is. And they, they have kids with baskets, you know, on poles, and they run through the crowd, and you're, and you're, you're giving them donations, and it funds all of their music programs. So it's, it's a great fundraiser, and they have food trucks down there. It's a lot of fun. I'd like to see that here, of course, but.
It seems like in conversations with people, I've heard, you know, 5,000 seats for, in the $5 million amphitheater outdoor. I don't know if that is just kind of a rumor, but that's what I've been hearing, talking to different people.
Yeah, the biggest thing that the, the committee got to was, wonderful idea, we've got good concepts, we've got good renderings, but it was really about the economics of it. And how much draw can you have? How big of entertainment can you support? How much money would, would show or two a year kickoff? And so it's really right sizing it for the community, but also being able to self-sustain itself. So that was the next step that the committee had got to.
What's that, you didn't jump that in either?
Well, the, the concept, if you look at the drawings, the concept is that every seat in the place has a view of the harbor between the two piers. And they, we actually rotated it or orientated it so that there's views of the sunsets from every seat from May through, basically, May through September. Um, and then the stage was meant to be very professional, with professional lighting and sound, but it also was an artistic piece for the community. And I won't get into all the details of it, but, um, it was, it was meant to be recessed down so that it wasn't, you know, way above ground, but it, but the focal point was down lower. Um, some of the renderings, you can actually see through the back of the stage and, and see it's part of the lighthouse and the catwalk. So the intent was for that to be recessed, for the seating to be kind of on slope banks and tiered, so that everybody has great views, but also can see the harbor.
Bill, I was looking through here, and it looked like, um, I saw something in the back here where the capital improvement stuff, where that amphitheater was really like a six-year-out plan. Did I, did I quote that wrong, or? I, I'm trying to find it right now, but I thought I saw it in here somewhere, where it was like, okay, that's not going to happen for a while, or?
It was in the parks. And I think it was kind of a question mark about, um, some of these.
Yeah. Councilmember Lundberg, in the capital improvement plan, it's on your screen right now. You can see, it shows First Street Beach Outdoor Stage. It's kind of TBD. We don't know what it's going to cost yet, because we haven't done the feasibility study, and we don't know when. But it really depends. I mean, if you had a big donor or the community really got behind it, it's just, it's too tenuous to kind of pencil in anything at this point.
What's going on with the Housing North? I know that we have 2,000. Have we, and we did something this year with it. Anything?
So they've been developing the, the scripts, job description. They've been getting funding to kind of get the level of, up to where it would need to be for a full-time position. I think my whole, my plan is, you know, we have some things going on with the land bank, is that position would kind of help with programming through either like a rehab, some new housing developments, maybe senior housing, they can kind of, that centralized kind of intake, because there's going to be some administrative work to do programs. I'm hoping to work more with the chamber on kind of, uh, getting these programs set up. And I think, um, you're going to see, well, you're going to see the agreement come before you in May. But I think, kind of, if we set this up right, we can kind of do some, we can do more projects with the land bank and do some more pilots and, and things like that to get some, some programs off the ground. But I think the, the issue, too, is we, administrative capacity. I mean, we've contracted a lot of things with, you know, the planning department, and, and they do a great job. It's just when we have these new projects, we need to be able to launch them and make them sustainable. So my hope is this is another position to add capacity, to do more programs.
Where did we put towards this year? Was it 40?
So there was a placeholder that my predecessor put in for the chamber for Housing North. So none of that was spent that last year. So we're looking to kind of, you know, I think we got the decision, or we, we received information that it is allowable, you know, we can spend, they basically gave us that lost revenue opinion, which was great, which meant that we can spend it as we wanted to. And so we're going to be moving forward with, with those, this next.
Rolling over?
I'm sorry?
The money that we didn't spend, and that's just rolling over to this?
Correct, yeah.
Seeing as the city is almost built, built up, I'm just kind of concerned, like, how, what benefit does the city specifically get from supporting Housing North at $20,000 a year?
So I, my whole, my plan is that it would be kind of a capacity, and they work with, doing programs with the land bank, you know, if we're going to take on a foreclosed property and rehab it. I think we need some people to be able to kind of administer the paperwork and things like that. And then also intake, when we, when we, if we're going to be doing some new develop, housing developments, I think that would be kind of. I think that would be kind of working with developers, identifying sites, getting plans, working with a builder, some more of a dedicated staff person for those things.
And then how much money are you still giving the chamber?
So we're, that's, we're looking at 20,000 for, you know, each year for Housing, I'm sorry, for Housing North, looking for 40,000 for the chamber this next year and
But we didn't pay them 40,000 this year.
We did not. We didn't redo the, we didn't amend the agreement. So they got 20,000 this last year.
Wait, you're saying 40 next year?
Correct.
So this 20 that you're seeing there is on top of the 20 that we're already paying them. So we're paying them 20,000 right now out of our general fund. And to enhance that, it would be an additional 20 that we're proposing, at least for one year, to use ARPA funds.
And their agreement's up, June 30th.
I don't think that's needed.
What is the extra?
Additional 20.
So my, when talking to them, I want them to work more on housing and that's what I put in the agreement, is that they'd be working more on, kind of building capacity to do more housing progress, projects in the city of Manistee.
Who was doing that? I'm sorry, I didn't hear the first part of that.
I'm sorry, the chamber, that's, that was kind of my pitch to that EDC board.
Housing North, 20,000 a year, you're giving it to the chamber.
I think we need more capacity in general.
That doesn't make sense to do that. I think that's, you don't need somebody to come in and tell you on a foreclosed property what's, I mean, how to rehab it. It's kind of just a contractor.
Didn't we already increase it already once because of adding economic? Because it just seems like we're keeping, giving it more and more each time.
So it never was increased last year because we didn't redo the, we didn't amend the contract to go from 20 to 40.
So, so in the current
Just to interject here on something that, that I think I should, only because a lot of times I hear what we're doing and you don't know what another group is doing. I have been in touch with a couple of people who are connected to the Wagner Center and they've always wanted that housing development around the Wagner Center. We have sort of, I was invited to a meeting with MEDC, with Mark Miller and Stacy and members of a subcommittee that's working on housing for that. And it, it turned out that ME, MEDC was, really gave them a thumbs down on it for different reasons. So I think they need to rethink what they're doing and what they've decided to go with is to contract with a consultant out of Traverse City. So it's my advice that we find out more information about this from Sarah Howard or from their board of directors for, for the seniors. And, and that, it just makes sense to make sure that everybody's looped in on what they're doing because it sounds like they have found a really good consulting firm to help them rather than going through the chamber. So it's something to think about and see how that fits in or doesn't fit in with the numbers. I think the money for Housing North and the chamber is not money that's being well spent, all of it. I don't think we need to spend $80,000 on any of it.
And I'm in the same with you, Mina. When your DDA gave them 25,000 and within a short time they were back here asking for more money and they wanted to hire more people. I mean, they keep raising this price every year and I just disagree with it.
Yeah, I was comfortable with the 20,000, not the 40,000.
I think that's where my level of comfort ends, falling on, going higher than the 20,000.
I agree. 20,000.
But I, I do think that Housing North has, has a lot of potential that we're not really looking at. It's been several years since we actually had anyone working housing and they got housing. I mean, they got it funded where it was built on the north side, the housing going
On Grove Street.
That was all done through
That was done, that was done even before Thad Taylor, if you understand that right.
Oh, yeah. But what I'm saying is the last time we actually had, physically had somebody that was dedicated to housing. There, there's money and opportunities out there, but it isn't easy. I'll say, I worked with Vanessa on Habitat. It is, it is very, very labor intensive. I mean, Vanessa works probably 40 hours a week on Grove, just, just because of the program. But if you had somebody, I honestly think if you had somebody that could work, we could get some good housing built in Manistee. But it takes somebody to do it and connect themselves with all those fundings and write those grant proposals. And that's, it, it all takes time. So I think that the Housing North potential is, is actually very good for Manistee.
But doesn't that cover a large area?
Yes, it does.
It does. And I think we're a small part of the large area. So I, I would be rather, it was more concentrated here. I think we talked about community development and if you could spend a few minutes talking about what community development, if we had a person in that position, do, would be helpful with this.
Well, we have somebody come up here, they did a while back, they had a talk, but everything's changed.
Yeah, I'm okay with spending it. If it's staying here, if it's like
What they can do now for us, not for the county.
Like, I feel like we're always footing the bill for everybody else to benefit, is what it
Is the county paying anything towards Housing North?
So, yeah, the county put in money. The county did a three-year contract with the chamber for 40,000. They'll kind of show you those, a lot of the contacts, the economic, what Mark Miller does, works in the city of Manistee. So there's a lot of partnerships. I know there's been some, some changing in staff, too, but this was just kind of something to set it up and I wanted to line up, I know our planning contract is coming to close with the county the next year and then we had one, you know, I was thinking we could line it up and potentially, if we wanted to, and still have partnerships with the chamber and the county at some level. But also we could have the flexibility, if the cost was too high, we could bring in a community development director. And that, you know, it's something that deal with code enforcement, I know the police department's doing that now, but a lot of times there's just a lot of flexibility with having that position. But I don't think a 40-hour position accomplishes all the things we need to do. So I don't know that just one full-time, that's why I think we are going to need these partnerships and expertise and things like that. And whether it's another, you know, through Sarah Howard or whomever, I think we need to position ourselves with partnerships to tackle this issue jointly and make sure we have capacity to do these projects. So that's kind of where, that's kind of why this budget is the way it is with those entities.
Can I just go back real quick to where we started with the, are we going to freeze the water and sewer until we do that study in the fall? We kind of just skimmed over it.
I mean, if there's a consensus to do that, we can certainly budget it. Freezing the rates costs the water and sewer utility jointly about 150,000. I'd like to see that money replaced through either ARPA funds or marijuana money because we, we kind of look at those funds going out three or four years and, you know, you've got to have enough working capital, you've got to have money to be able to fund infrastructure repairs to match them up with streets. So those funds are all interconnected. So that would be my recommendation. If you wanted to freeze those, we just need to backfill it with something potentially.
And aren't we going to pick, get some more money anyway? Because, you know, once all, all the units are done at Hillcrest, once the Hampton Inn is in play, once the Gateway project is in place, aren't we going to get a lot of pickup from those people hooking up to our system? They're going to be paying fees, they're going to be paying into the system.
Yeah, there will be some revenue from that. I've modeled some of that. Obviously not Gateway because it's not built yet and Hampton Inn, it's a little hard to know depending on their occupancy. But yes, moving forward, that'll certainly help. The more customers and the more volume, it's, that's our cash register for the, the water and sewer utility.
Right.
Well, I, I think the idea of, of spending the marijuana money to eliminate a increase in the sewer water is gold.
Yep.
Where is it in this budget? Like, where did you allocate it? Where can I find it?
So, well, I didn't because it came in, I mean, I was, the budget was almost printed when that news came in. It didn't come in until very, very end of March. So that's why we let council know, but there's no way to, no way to incorporate that into the budget.
We absolutely need to freeze the rates for the citizens. That's my primary goal.
Yep.
Making sure that happens.
Absolutely.
And refund the difference is up to
But is there enough to do the millage, too, the .5 mill? Because I thought that's what we had talked about, too, for the
The 280 in marijuana money, just as an example only, would be enough to, to backfill the water and sewer for the rate freeze and it would be enough to backfill the millage for the PFAS. Yeah. And so rather than just absolutely commit to that on the, on the millage and say, we're going to send $100,000 over to the refuse fund and it's going to stay there, I would just restrict those funds and then as the PFAS bills come in, we just pay them.
Yeah.
Do it that way. Because we don't know what those are going to be yet. But that certainly would cover both of those two big items and you could eliminate the rate increase and you would not have to do at this time any kind of a millage increase on refuse.
And then still the street thing?
So the Sixth Street, you wouldn't have enough to do that, but if, if you supplemented that with some ARPA funds, if you look at this, this page, there's, you know, there's a lot of ARPA funds that aren't committed yet.
Yeah.
If that was a priority, you could commit ARPA funds to doing that because there isn't enough money in the street funds. It, it would really deplete it down to the point where it would, it just wouldn't be workable, but you might not need the full 200,000, depending on where bids come in.
And, and that's a reasonable way to spend that ARPA money.
Yeah.
So I have no objections to that.
No, I just have one question, though. The budget mentions the DWAM grant, what it, I, I don't remember what that was about.
The DWAM?
It's a drinking water asset management. So we received grant last year, we've already begun implementation, but it's essentially to come up with a inventory of our service lines within the city.
Okay. Because it was part of the increase in revenue and stuff, so I was confused on why that was
And it's a pass-through, so as that, as the money's being spent, then it gets reimbursed from that state grant.
So we can't use that for any of the increase in?
Correct. I, I just wanted to take the opportunity to point out something. When, when you're talking about supplementing the water and sewer fund with non-revenue sources of money, and council has done that several times over the years, but this is exactly why we did, or one of the reasons why we did the rate study was to make sure we can fund capital improvements. But it also dived into what did the citizens pay versus non-citizens pay? So when you're putting other sources of money into that, that becomes a contribution by the city of Manistee residents. That's what gives us a different rate that we charge the townships because the townships are not committing similar resources to help offset that. And so when we, when we redo this rate study, it'll help point out those, those differences. But if you ever get asked why the townships have to pay a little higher rate, it's because sometimes council has chose to subsidize the, the water and sewer fund without using just the revenue side of it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are we calling an order or just asking random questions?
Whoever has a question?
I didn't know. I got a bunch of questions if you're
All right, yeah, go for it.
You want me to tell you the page number because you're going to look when you see it?
Sure. I'll, I'll pull it up.
Uh, page 146. Did everybody get excited at once?
Which, which section is that?
Safe Bill.
It is in this
Fee schedule? Yeah, it's almost there. There you go.
Okay, so I just have a question on this with the fees and the permit schedule. Are they going up? Is that what, is that why this is in here? Because I couldn't find?
I, I can't speak to whether they're going up. This was the, the schedule that Safe Bill gave us and there was a request last year to have it in the fee schedule because it had never been published in the budget before. So that's why it's here. Whether it's going up or not, this is what they provided to us. I don't, I don't know that answer.
No, it's, it was just, I think, Councilmember Bachmann brought it up as well that it should be in, you know, I think he was looking for it in the budget and he had a question from a constituent, so we thought to put this in. But it does mirror the state of Michigan permit schedule, so, but we just thought it'd be more complete to put it in the budget.
Okay. That was my question on that.
Can I jump in just because of this area?
Absolutely.
I think it's important that we get with the county and have a single definition for what is repair and maintenance. I am tired of constantly getting calls and I can, I can't tell them why.
I agree.
You know, we should have one definition between the county and the city. Somebody's got to be right, wrong, or indifferent. They feel, the county feels that they are completely justified in how they determine what is repair and maintenance versus what is new work. And apparently Safe Bill does, too. But my personal opinion, we should lean towards the county. We're, you know, the other areas in, that surround us so that our, our determination of what is repair versus what is new work is on the same line.
I think myself, Mr. Bradford and Mr. Saylor have discussed this and I think where I'm kind of leaning on this is, like you said, kind of we'll do a memo about, this is the type of thing, examples of ordinary repair, the state definition is, is this and that's through Laura, and then we can say, if you have any questions, you can contact Safe Bill. I think that's kind of the simplest way. We provide some direction if they need further clarity.
I, I think that they need to come in before, because their contract is up, I think, next month or June or something. Like they, we need to have clarification because I
But the problem
Seriously, I'm sick of answering my phone with the same, I'm not a contractor. I can't
And the county, like I said, the county is not, is determining and I'll use the windows. They don't, if replacing a window is repair and maintenance, it is not new work. And they don't charge a fee. We do. And they say, well, it's not in the book. Well, it's not in the book for the county either and they've made that determination in favor of the builders. And the same thing with siding. So those are the things, the, those four or five specifics, I think.
New roofs, too.
Yeah, new roofs. Somebody's got to be, you know, if, if the state is allowing them and the state inspectors are not deeming it, then why are we?
But Safe Bill has always been like dead against, this is how we're going to deal with it.
Right.
If they're not going to change their ways.
Well, they work for us. So if we tell them that
That's what I'm saying, though, are we going to renew their contract if they're not, because we've been about, down before.
Right. Well, but again, I think it's, it's up from, from the city to determine whether or not we want to go and, and mirror what the county and the other filer and the other places are using as their definition for repair. Everything else kind of falls in line, but there is where there's, there's differences. And again, it's an interpretation of a very vague piece of, of legislation.
Do you have a definition of the bill?
So it is on the Laura website and I can, I can send it to council and I can send you a draft of what I propose to, to put out. And I do think, yeah, just kind of saying, these are the things we consider ordinary repair. Here's the definition from Laura. If you have any questions, please contact us, I think is going to.
That's why I ended up with the guy on Perry, because they got into an argument of a window falling out. That he needed permission.
My, uh, wait, ready? Okay. My next one is the appropriations for the Ramsdale Arts. This one confuses me because I don't understand why they ask for the 50,000 for the repairs and maintenance in utilities if we already pay those. Like I, I get we own the building
We don't, the city doesn't pay those. The city does not pay the utilities or the repairs and maintenance at the Ramsdale, the RRCA does. The only thing that the city covers are costs that are above $7,500 or, and we pay the debt service on the roof.
Okay. I just, so what bothers me on this is when Xavier came in and did his presentation and he flat-out said, we don't do fundraising to make a surplus. So they're relying on us to pay their utilities then, basically, because they don't want to fundraise more to, to pay their bills. I feel like that's a
So I think, I think that maybe was a misinterpretation of what he said. We, our fundraising has gone up every year, but that's going into programming so that we can offer more to the community. And it's also going into investments back into the building. So for example, the RRCA put in a brand-new soundboard for the, for the theater and they redid it, the art gallery. So those all, those assets all are the cities. The RRCA doesn't own any assets. It all becomes property of the city because it's a city building. So I just want to be clear on that. So I just want to be clear on that, the fundraising is continuing to go up, but it's to it's to grow and to expand the programs. And because it's a city-owned building, that board feels like the the fifty thousand dollars is a reasonable contribution, and it's declined considerably over time from where it used to be. But it's kind of a baseline to just do those core things to kind of maintain the city building and and keep the doors open.
But that is what he said, though, because I watched it back, just to make sure I knew what he was saying, but I just, it seems like they never have any money, like, the way that I'm reading this is, unless I'm reading this completely wrong, they had over half a million dollars and they spent half a million dollars. They don't have any, they don't have any other funds.
Yeah, I mean, they they they, they, pretty much, because it's growing, they spend what they bring in in ticket sales and in fundraising and in donations and sponsors.
But maybe you should like not spend so much money and not, you know, expect the fifty thousand, because I mean, if you look at, like, if you look at the teen center, they have more money in the surplus than the Ramsdale, like, they have nineteen thousand dollars.
The Ramsdale has more than that in the surplus. But I, the Ramsdale financials aren't in here, because it's a nonprofit, we don't include those in the budget. This is just an allocation to that nonprofit to run the theater.
And basically, it's paying the utility bills.
Okay, it still doesn't make sense to me, but.
Well, you know, it's it's like NPR, you know, I donate to NPR, but I don't wanna be paying their electric bill, I wanna be paying for listening to the radio shows that I like. And it's the same thing with my contributions to the Ramsdale, it's for the programs that they're giving back to the community, not, like you said, paying for gas and electric.
Well, in the book, it says that the city made an agreement, they would handle, manage, and operate the Ramsdale. But we do all that, yet they want more money from us. I mean, they should be honing in on getting more people to come in there, advertising more, and do their own budget. I think they're asking.
Remember that we own that building.
Actually, less.
Yeah, it's ours.
It can't be the answer for everything.
I'm I'm not, I'm not saying it does, but.
Own the building, like, I get we own the building, but if if you can't, if you don't have enough money, then maybe you shouldn't have put a neon sign on the side of the building that runs twenty-four hours a day, because that ups your utility bills, like, I I'm not comprehending this. And I don't know if it's maybe the way that they put their budget report together, or the way that they're asking for it, but it just, it doesn't make sense to me, because you're spending ten thousand dollars in electric and twenty-five thousand dollars in gas, like, twenty-five thousand dollars in gas is crazy.
It's a big building.
Okay. I'm not getting, okay.
So I've got a question, if you have more, I'm sorry.
Well, so their fun, their balance then is twenty-three thousand dollars.
You're looking at the back of.
Yes. Trying to make this make sense to me, because right now, it makes absolutely no sense to me whatsoever, why they need an extra fifty, why they need the fifty thousand dollars.
Okay, so the the budget, it's in the very back of your printed budget, it's not in the electronic version with the supplemental information, and it's the second, the third, or the last page.
Well, this is the most telling sentence on this page, the city appropriation constitutes about ten percent of the overall RRCA budget. It is used primarily for repairs and maintenance and upgrades to the city-owned Ramsdale Theater. I mean, so their budget is much bigger than that fifty thousand.
So the the budget that they submitted with the appropriation request, and this is still being refined, because again, our fiscal year, this is a little bit earlier than the Ramsdale's budget process, but it's showing a little bit of a deficit, but there are fund reserves. I mean, you can't run a deficit without having some fund reserve, so we do have some there, but it's not a substantial amount. And the only reason that's there is because we were able to get some grants through the COVID thing, we actually weathered that storm fairly well.
And I know, I I don't know if you can put your finger on this, but how much in total do they get approximately a year in the way of donations from the community, just individuals or different organizations giving them money?
Yeah, so if you look at the second to the last line item, it says contributions, donations, we've budgeted a hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Okay. I'm done, I guess.
Okay, anything else for me?
No, I'm good.
Are you sure? You had a last?
Rest of that's all screwed, I'm good.
So I had a question about the Rotary Park fencing. We have ten thousand, I thought the Hampton Inn was gonna help pay for that. We talked about doing that, I know that's kind of my big thing.
So we may be able to include that in the brownfield plan when we bid out the repaving of the loop and some of that stuff, but we talked about that internally, if that doesn't qualify for that, then we'll be able, we'll find a way to fund that internally, depending on where that fence needs to go.
Okay.
So we did, yeah, we put it in, I think, the capital budget for next year to line up with the other improvements and whether it's, I think we talked about if it's gonna be a split rail fence, working through the Parks Commission to figure out the right kind of aesthetics or what type, because I don't know if a chain link's gonna fit there, so we'll have to figure, there's some decisions that need to be made and figure out the best fit, but we did incorporate that into the capital, and we also looked at putting in the brownfield plan. Did you have a specific type of fence, I guess that was the other?
I just wanted to see something there for the last.
Because I think we were talking about the split rail, kids could still go through it, but at least it'd be a barrier.
And think.
Okay. So maybe that's something Jeff, when you're working with the Parks Commission, figure out what type.
Um, it was the capital.
So it's kind of a large expanse, and you were specifically thinking about the completely from, I don't think it's.
No, I thought it was down going this way, I think that was where I thought it was gonna be.
Yeah, I'm not sure we know where the fence needs to go, I think is the question here.
Behind you.
The whole, the whole street?
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, I just were.
But it, but it was going down around the outside, I thought, more of where the, where the actual Rotary Park is.
Yeah.
Right there.
Yeah.
Between the playground and the street.
Yes.
Right, on First Street.
On First Street.
I mean, it doesn't have to go through, around the whole park, just so it's where the street is where the traffic.
Okay, so maybe the parking lot to the other parking lot entrance, that kind of what you were thinking?
Well, just where, like, um, no, it just, where it would stop the kids from going into the street, not to like.
Okay, I'm just, we're just trying to figure out where it starts and ends exactly, but.
I I think you need the fence, because you don't wanna stray ball going in the street and park cars and people driving through there and looking at other things beside, looking out their windshield.
Well, it was a concern of mine for years, and that was before the hotel was gonna be put in, so.
It's a necessity, I believe.
We need a new map, because that's, a lot of those trees are gone, and that building is gone.
Let's Google it.
It's a date on it.
It's probably from two thousand and seven.
I just had one question, it said that we still have to hire the thirteenth officer, what's going on with that?
I'm making a conditional offer from Plymouth to Canada, we started as a cadet this weekend. He's in the academy, he's set to graduate May ninth, he successfully completes the academy, psychological testing, we'll bring him aboard as thirteenth officer. So I have extended a conditional offer from Plymouth to him.
But he'll be working with somebody else when he comes out, so that's where it's still at. We'll give you his time in.
When he comes out, he'll go through a sixty-week FTO process.
Next.
Mayor?
Yes? I'm just looking at some numbers, what? What can I do for you?
Nothing, I just was wondering if anybody else had anything to ask.
I'm kind of wondering that too, I mean, I said everything that I thought was important to me at the beginning, and I was really grateful that a lot of other people are thinking along the same, so, appreciate that.
I I got a question, if I can, on the marina. So it, you know, the marina always seems to show negatives every year. And part of that, I understand, is because of the marina building itself, correct? So to me, the top part of that building, the bathrooms off the street and that the large meeting hall really isn't the marina, but they seem to be paying that that fee. Is it possible for us to reassess that building and say that the top part of that building, which is the city's, I mean, the marina people don't use it, it is, it's us, we rent it, the bathrooms, the, um, community uses it and, you know, was used for church for a few months, but I don't ever see marina people having any use or access to it. It's basically a a city asset, so is it possible for us to look at the square footage and then move that requirement to the city where I believe it is reasonable and logical and remove that burden from the marina?
You could, but we give the rental revenue to the marina, they get that revenue.
I'm guessing it, it doesn't nearly offset what the cost of, but I don't know, maybe.
Well, yeah, and I don't.
It's a hundred and twenty dollars for the day, because I just rented it for July thirteenth.
Without, without doing the calculations, I mean, you could look at that and see, but a lot of the expense for the marina are the the staff and the fuel costs.
Sure, no, I know.
So there's, I mean, there's not a lot of building costs, you could certainly look at it, but then, you know, you'd shift that burden then back onto the general fund, and I guess at that point, you'd probably send those revenues to the general fund, unless you wanted to continue to subsidize.
Well, and and that's what I'm just wondering, is there, is there a benefit to it, so it's really more of a question.
The one thing to keep in mind is, we, you can see we've budgeted deficits, but we we've run surpluses, that's because we budget the marina, I I have to budget the marina very conservatively, because it's really tight. So I I always, it shows that deficit, but we often come in under that on the expense side. And the other piece of that to keep in mind, this debt service for the marina is gonna, is gonna go off relatively soon, it's still got a few years, and once that falls off, then the marina will be fine. And we'll be able to reduce, we did reduce the contribution from the capital improvement fund from sixty-five to sixty this year. So we're, we're doing better, and, you know, hopefully with the rest of the new docks in place, if fuel costs aren't too much, I, and and when Fracano's opens up, I I think the marina is gonna start to see some improvements over time, it just, it feels like it's, it's, it's time to shine, so we're hopeful on that. You know, I think a little bit, maybe more targeted marketing, and Jeff has an experienced marina person that is gonna be running the operation this year, so I think, I think we'll see some improvements down there.
As far as renting it goes, it's such a good deal, because it's a hundred and twenty dollars for the whole day, I can pick up the keys Friday night. The the DPW, we, you know, can set up tables and chairs, there's forty chairs, three round tables, two long tables. I'm I'm renting it for the Lakeside Club, because I'm a director in the Lakeside Club, and we're using it as our end point for the tour of homes, because we're doing tour of homes again this year, which is a big fundraiser for us. So it, it's a great deal, and we're very excited to be using it, so I appreciate the fact that we have the space to use. So it's a, I'm just trying to plug the marina, I'm trying to.
Are all the docks repaired already? I mean, I know we had all that stuff with the siege or the whatever it was called. Are they all functioning now and rentable?
The the final five docks are under construction right now.
Okay.
The piles are set, they should be completed within the next few weeks.
They're putting decks on it today.
Yeah, four of them, or one of them was complete, so there was four that.
Real close.
Awesome. But the electrical upgrade, is that gonna take some docks out of service, or the service of them until that gets done?
The electrical upgrade that we put in the budget, so there's a underground short to the lighting that's along the the marina, that's the issue. We, we had top line looking, 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 looking last year. It's to the point where they're not gonna be able to pinpoint where that short is, so they're gonna need to relay new conductors for the lights along the marina.
At least power pedestals in the budget, actually, the picture one of the power pedestals in the docks.
And that's not what this would fund, it would fund the the electrical supply to the lights along the the Riverwalk or marina.
But there's pedestals too.
Yeah, that was probably my bad, I probably grabbed the wrong picture out of that, so. If he's saying it's the lights, then it's the lights, I was thinking it was going to the light.
So there shouldn't be any, any disruption to the boaters.
We got a lot of people trying to get some of the docks lined up.
I sure hope so, we've had a little bit.
The way it is.
Yeah, we've been able to to satisfy the demand so far, but I think when those five docks get improved, that's gonna make a huge difference, and we're planning on adjusting them lower as the water's going down, so they'll be much more attractive than what used to be there.
Right now, you need an eight-foot step ladder to get down to your boat, so.
Yeah, and and, and I mean, if you remember, the the docks were so low before that we had to put two, sometimes three stacks of of decking on top of that, just to get them up out of the water, so.
I lied, I got a couple more questions. That's okay, go ahead. So I just, I got a couple of questions, just on some small things I was just curious about. So the, um, the fountain downtown? We're not allowed to do like a fundraiser or anything like that to to refurbish that, are we?
See why you couldn't?
I don't know.
You couldn't, I mean, we could.
I'm just thinking like with the people, with like the tourists and stuff coming in town, like, if we had like some type of fundraiser to to restore it. I mean, it's not, it's not a lot of money, but I'm just, I'm just cheap, if it's not a purse, I'm trying to spend that kind of money. And then the the bulletproof glass for the downstairs, is that, is that needed? Like, are we there at this point?
I mean, I I guess that's an open question, I know there was supposed to have been bulletproof glass in the police department back when City Hall was renovated, but we discovered that that was not installed, so the glass that's for the receptionist down there and the one-way glass that's for an office, neither of those is bulletproof, so this project would fund that. Plus, my staff had asked if there couldn't be a better barrier for the public, it's, it's fairly common. So is it, is it, is it have to happen? No, it doesn't have to happen, but that's something that they asked, and we've been trying to kind of work into the budget, so it'll do both those departments.
Okay. I guess I didn't realize that the police department didn't have it down there, okay. How I'm done.
Are we gonna leave that ornamentation there?
So there's discussion about possibly, and that's not original to the building, everybody needs to know that, but about taking the center part out, but leaving the two ones on the side, so it still looks nice, but that hasn't been decided yet, it it needs to be looked at. It's, it's very distracting for people that have to, you're doing this all the time, looking through the bars, so that, that there's a potential that might come down or be altered.
I can't see Laura when I'm being by.
I've got a question on the signs, is the sixty thousand going to get us the, 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 both sides of thirty-one plus the downtown and then a few directional signs? What is the sixty thousand gonna get us? And what would it take to actually get both, you know, the both the signs on thirty-one and the downtown sign complete?
So I, I believe the intent of that line item was to fund the south entrance into the city and the north entrance in the city alone. I believe the the DDA sign that's behind Auto Value was originally funded by the DDA, and then when it was replaced, it was also funded by the DDA. So that. So that line item was, was just to cover the two entry signs.
Because the picture they used was the downtown sign. That's the question. And also, you know, that sign is broken right now. The lights are broken down. I've tilted them at least so they shine on the sign instead of on the road, but, but they're, it's in pretty bad shape.
Yeah, I've had that conversation with the DDA for years.
So we did add weight finding signs as well. I think, talking about the Founder's Walk, we wanted to add a little bit more. So I think, as I was saying, we could also modify some of the existing signs. There's kind of a vinyl. So maybe we could do a couple trial ones based on new branding. But there's not a lot of money for that, but it was mostly those, the two entrance signs and then a little bit to try some, some new things.
And then the only other thing I had is, you know, please make sure that we put some attention onto the sidewalks. Because I, you know, again, have a lot of people who walk and sidewalks have not improved, at least on the, any place other than the north side, but.
The north side and then west of Maple Street is where we have gone. Now we'll be going down between Maple and US 31 is the next week.
Great. Thank you.
When do you get on the other side? I know, like, my boys were racing and I had to keep telling them, "Pick up your feet. You're gonna trip."
Yeah, I mean, there's no, there's no good place to start-stop. It's like plowing snow. Somebody's the first, somebody's the last. So what we, what our staff and our contractor's done is, we've gone through the north side. We broke the city into kind of zones. So then we started west of Maple at the river and we're down, we're almost down to 12th Street now. The next segment will be starting again at the river and going between Maple and 31 all the way, be all the way to 12th Street. And then the next segment will be going east of 31 and working north to south.
When you say segments, is that like spring?
Well, every year we do it. So the first thing we do is, we bring in the saw cutting crew and they remove every trip hazard that's less than two inches. And they get as far as they can with the money that's been, when, been budgeted. Then our crews follow behind and we do remove and replacements. And we continue that until that budget money's gone. And then the next year, we repeat.
And there's a total of $32,000 budgeted for sidewalks this year between the major and local street funds?
There's also, we're working with the Region 10 Health Department and they're looking for some grants for a, between Third, I don't remember how far it went, Third Street to maybe Ninth Street, but a small zone in there that they're looking to raise funds to do some additional sidewalk, saw cutting, trip hazard removals. And then we're also working with residents to kind of trim back some of the overgrowth of brush and that sort of thing, too.
Is there anything that you'd like to tell us?
No, I guess, just from the guy that's gotta kind of go back and make some of the changes here. I think I understand the water and the marijuana money and the Sixth, Sixth Street. I wasn't clear, though, on the Chamber and Housing North. It sounded like Housing, Housing North may be okay, but maybe not the extra 20 for the Chamber. But I wasn't clear on that. I don't know, Bill, if you need clarification or not.
Well, I think these contracts are gonna come into the, in May, so we'll be talking about them coming up.
Are you gonna invite?
I was gonna invite the Chamber and Housing North.
Okay, what about the rental inspections and all?
So that, I know, I know Councilmember Sullivan was, I'm sorry?
Are they gonna come to talk to us before we?
I could have, so their contract is not up and it's not my recommendation to terminate. I could have them come to a study session. I underst, so that's where that's at.
It's too late to terminate their contract anyway if we wanted to.
Well, just to get us under the same, on the same page about what we want for permits.
I can, and I think as, that is an administrative kind of defining, saying replacement windows, soffit. I think kind of telling them that's how it's gonna be. I will, I will put the memo. I can have a draft, so I'll send that out and then we'll, we can publish that.
So is, is this something that we want to put into the budget that is not in the budget? Or is it, this is the swim safe?
It's, it's in.
It is in the budget, right? So that was just a clarification of what that was. Terrific. Okay.
So I guess maybe, maybe the suggestion would be that we've, we have the money that's here in the budget. And if, if council's gonna have to have another bite at that apple through the contracts anyway that come to you, maybe that's the simplest and cleanest way to do it. But if you'd like it a different approach, then we can do that as well.
Well, I think we need to stay at the $20,000 for the Chamber and not an extra $20,000. I mean, if the Housing North is something that's gonna be beneficial, I don't, does it have to be three years? I mean, can we just do it like one and see how it goes?
So I think the idea is to fund that position for three years because there is gonna be some upfront work. And then that's been the sales pitch. And granted, this was set up before I got here, or at least the idea of it. And we're kind of at that point where they're gonna do it or we're not gonna do it. And I think with, they're gonna come in, make their pitch. And I think it's a, I think that's probably the time we can talk a little bit more about it. But it's, yeah, they've been working on it for, I think, over a year, kind of getting it set up. And to just hire a position and then only be able to fund it for a year, I don't know how much interest you're gonna get for a capable person to come in.
Okay, that makes sense.
And to address the concerns about, you know, are they gonna be focusing on the city? So the way Housing North works is that if we, this position gets hired, it would be dedicated to Manistee County. So first of all, it's not over a wide geographical area, even though Housing North covers all those counties. This would be dedicated to Manistee County. But then further, I mean, where are they gonna build these types of housing potentially? It's gonna be where you have utilities. So that's either gonna be the city, Manistee Township or Philer Township. And they're all gonna benefit city residents because, you know, people who need that housing, they wanna be close to the, where their service is. And so I think it will be a real tangible benefit. The other thing that I had offered up when I was doing the interim manager is to house that person at City Hall. So whether that survives or not, but that's a benefit, too, because then you have that day-to-day contact. It's easier to monitor what they're doing and that sort of thing.
Good idea.
But we don't know what that's gonna look like, but I had put that out there because we do have vacant office space here.
Okay.
All right, well, that makes, that makes it, for me personally, it makes it easier to just hold the Chamber at $20,000 since we're gonna put $20,000 over at three, each year for three years for the Housing North person. That way the Chamber doesn't have that on their back for housing.
And my thought would be that they'd kind of work with this Housing North position as well. But we can discuss that with the Chamber.
Ed, I asked you a year ago, the streetlights and attorney on the same budget. Now I see you got Mike Spicer Group under that same budget. I don't know how you, I see you're putting it all in here onto one page. But, I mean, you got engineering services, you got attorney fees. How come we can't break that up?
So that...
Agree that lighting comes on attorney's budget.
Well, this isn't, this isn't the attorney budget. This is the general, it's, it's a budget for items that don't really fall under a particular department. So we've got attorney here, we've got streetlights, and we've got things that are kind of citywide in nature. Now, with that said, we're going through another chart of account conversion that the state's mandating. We're in the middle of that now. And you will see some changes to this. I think they require, if I recall, the attorney line items to be broken out in a separate department. So we'll be, we'll be doing that and we'll be making some other changes that the state's gonna mandate. But that's why they're, right now, in this, it's for comparability from year over year. There's, all the attorney line items are together. But it's things that are kind of citywide in nature, so that's why we have them there.
Good, because, you know, I'm interested where the attorney, how much they're charging. And then we're paying so much on software agreements and you get computer hardware and a couple copy maintenance. Who's that for? You know, I mean, is it for the attorney, for the Spicer?
So I'm happy, I'm happy to run through this if you want. The computer hardware and software line item is for devices like network switches and things of that nature that benefit the whole city. They're not tied to a single department. Well, it could be City Hall. We have infrastructure at City Garage. We have stuff in a variety of places. So that's why it's, kind of just falls in that other category.
I'm glad you're separating it. Thank you.
Everybody think they've got their questions answered? So are you gonna make these changes in the budget as, I think we have a consensus on most of them? So are you gonna make the changes and then bring us a revised couple of sheets of paper or whatever we need?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make the changes. It might not get here for the public hearing, but I'll get, it'll certainly be in time for it to be adopted. So, yeah, we'll, we'll definitely make that. And we can point out what changes were made at the public hearing.
Okay, that's a good idea.
Not anything about the budget, but can I get an update about the bridges? Issue with 31 Bridge today and then...
The 31 Bridge simply had a break that was stuck and it tripped the circuit. So we re-tripped it, closed the bridge, let the traffic clear out. We were in good conversations with the captain. He was very patient. And then when we felt comfortable, we opened it back up. The ship left just before this meeting started. There was no issues with either one.
So what's going on with the Maple?
Maple Street Bridge, they completed all of the, the majority of the work. What, almost a substantial completion. But when we operated it, the bridge is out of balance and it's not operating optimum right now. So it's capable of being opened and closed. But it's not something that is in, is in the best way to operate it. So we had looked at, it took us probably a week and a half to get different experts here and the contractors and their, their people, for everybody to look at it and conclude that there wasn't something major. It was just, just a little bit out of balance. And we think that part of that imbalancing also possibly burned a resistor bank. So bottom line is, in order to, if we were to open that back up to traffic, it was gonna have to close again next week for them to put the final coatings on and so forth. And they can't do the final balancing until the final coatings and all that work is done because the bridges are balanced so precisely that any type of add-on coating, paint, anything can change that. So they're supposed to begin again next week, is what I understand.
Yeah, they can start tomorrow. Just a question, weather's gotta be warm enough.
Or dry enough.
Yeah, so we, so the concrete work can't have any coatings applied to it until it reaches its 28-day strength. The concrete is strong enough and so it's passed all of that. So that, that hurdle is cleared. Now it's just getting a stretch of, of warm weather and dry weather for them to put the coatings on. And then we can open it up. So we're still gonna be at least a month ahead of schedule for reopening it.
Is the Maple Street Bridge open to foot traffic?
It is not.
When will it be open to foot traffic?
It'll be open to foot traffic when the full bridge is open to vehicular traffic as well.
Okay.
The, the structure is actually still under the control of the contractor. And honestly, we, if we spend enough time out there, people are going across it just fine.
I was gonna say, I saw people that were...
It would be handy to be able to go across to block City Hall.
We did open it for a week, but it's gonna be closing shortly for the ceiling.
Jeff, just, is there a reason why they didn't paint underneath the bridge? So it, it looks, it's half gray, half white. Looks kind of undone.
It's honestly, it's, it's a matter of funds that are available. So what was painted, what, is what was necessary for corrosion control and where there was, you know, exposed metals. There's just not enough funding to do 100%. Anything they had?
And Rich can talk to me. Our structural engineer's not here, so I can talk for him. But it's, it's basically that, if there was any place exposed outside, it's more open to the ice and the salt. And there's certain areas underneath the bridge that are kind of protected. And it was just, really, it's money we don't need to spend. And on the outside, we obviously try and keep it consistent for aesthetics. So, I mean, theoretically, we wouldn't have to paint. We could spot paint a lot of the bridge. But, you know, you want it to look uniform on the outside. So underneath it, it's not, it's actually kind of common not to paint it like that. But it's, I forgot his number. He told me a number to, if we were to paint everything, it'd be another $50,000 or $100,000. And he said, "We just don't simply need to do it."
I, I just thought it was Air Force camouflage, so. Been gray, so.
So there's not an actual date that you can say when the bridge will be open?
Not yet.
They're required by, their, their contract runs through the end of May.
Yeah, we, end of May is the contracted date. We'll be well ahead of that.
Okay, and we're not gonna start anything on the 31 until that's totally done, right?
Well, the 31 is not our bridge, number one. Number two, they're finishing their designs on that. And construction is not supposed to commence until the spring of '23, a year from now.
Have they had people on the bridge working around?
Yeah, and that's normal inspection and normal maintenance stuff. These, these are very big, complex machines. And the state invests tremendously more money into that structure than we do.
Have they got more money?
What's that?
Under other, I do have a question. When are, when is the demolition gonna start for the Gateway Project?
So things are moving along pretty well with that. I think they're clearing the last few hurdles with Eagle. They, they're really, really, really trying to have it done before Memorial Day. That's the goal. But we don't know the exact timeframe. It should get started within the next month for sure.
Okay.
Do they have a schedule end of what they're gonna do with it?
So, I mean, that's obviously the first phase under the demo. And then, once the buildings are down, then they, they need to do some more investigations for soil remediation, some of that stuff. And then on a parallel path, the development team is finalizing their numbers. They've gotta get some money from MEDC. It's a pretty heavy, heavy ask of MEDC. And they're, and they're putting that all together. And the city is working on the backside on the brownfield plan and any potential other tax incentives to kind of make sure all the pieces fit together. So there's still some moving parts on there. But, you know, that project, if everything works out well, won't get under construction until a year from now as well.
But the demolition will take down all the buildings to Division Street?
Yeah, all seven, well, they don't, it's not seven buildings. I think it's six buildings on seven lots will be knocked down, so.
I got a question, I don't even know who to ask, about the dumpsters, about the enclosure. A couple of people are having an issue. Manistee Beverage has dumpster in their parking lot for TJ's, so they don't have to go up and over. So they want to enclose it, but I guess you gotta be 10 feet from the property line or the, the building. Well, that puts them in the middle of the parking lot. So I think we need to give or take a little bit because then I was looking at China Buffet. That puts them in the middle of McKee Street to enclose it. So there's no, I think we kind of gotta give them, they're all for enclosing it and making it aesthetic so it's not a eyesore. But I think we need to do a little give and take on the specifics of that.
No planning, sent out the letter to the property owners. So I think probably they should reach it back out and try to work with them and see how they can get those to fit.
Okay.
Yeah, the litter went up two years ago.
Well, they just got the dumpster over there, so. I'm just waiting for anybody else to throw a question out there or make a comment. If you sit here any longer, I'll have something all of a sudden. Well, you wanna make a motion to adjourn? Yes, I'm motion.